Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a special session of the City Council to be held on Monday, May 2, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting a work session to receive an update from the Hawkeye Area Community Action Program.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a special session of the Dubuque City Council for May 2, 2022. As a reminder to viewers and listeners, due to the nature of tonight's meeting topic, public input is not accepted. However, you may contact the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts. Attendance for the session is as follows. Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Council members Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Rousell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Our work session topic is the Hawkeye Area Community Action Program, or HACAP update. I will turn it over to HACAP Chief Executive Officer Jane Drapeau.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. As Adrian said, I'm Jane Drapeau. I'm the CEO of HACAP. With me this evening is Mitch Finn, our Deputy Executive Director, and we're going to be sharing information on HACAP, which is the community action agency that serves your area. We are HACAP. That's our byline that we go by. We're a diverse, community-focused nonprofit dedicated to making life better for at-risk members in our communities. We're one of over 1,000 community action agencies in our country and one of over 16 in the state of Iowa. Our mission is to help people develop skills to become successful and build strong communities. And our vision is a thriving community where all people have opportunities for success. We have six strategic initiatives that are set by our board, and everything that we do at HACAP falls under these strategic initiatives. The first one is affordable housing for all, and that includes strengthening our community through housing stock improvements, renovations, and/or the expansion of low-income housing through community partnerships. We provide affordable housing to at-risk populations in the areas we serve. We provide weatherization services to make a housing stock more affordable and safe. We also provide rental assistance to keep at-risk families from becoming homeless. We have our Child and Family Life Initiative, and that strengthens our community through the improvement of local childcare quality and the provision of age-appropriate education and development activities for low-income children and their families. We provide Head Start and early Head Start services in the counties that we do serve. In Dubuque County, we provide only Head Start services with the hope that we will be providing early Head Start services at some point. We also provide the Child and Adult Care Food Program, which reimburses family daycare home providers for serving nutritious meals and snacks in their homes. And we have some childcare training programs that improves the quality within those family daycare homes. And in three of our counties that we serve, we provide WIC and maternal and child health services and a number of child health programs. We also see food security as a critical initiative in the counties that we do serve, and we strengthen our community through an improved food pantry, meal site network, and improved access to low-cost nutritious foods for low-income populations. We're a Feeding America Food Bank for seven of the counties in our service area. However, Dubuque County is not one of them. Riverbend Food Bank is the Feeding America Food Bank that does serve Dubuque County, so we do partner with them to provide food to low-income families in the communities in the Dubuque community. We also have our Financial Stability Initiative, and that goal strengthens low-income households through improved financial stability. And programs that we operate that support this initiative include energy assistance, crisis assistance, water assistance, we have crisis counseling, and we also operate a number of local financial assistance programs. We have our Agency Excellence Initiative, and that's improved service delivery quality by strengthening the agency's capacity to assess, measure, and report our collective impact on local poverty. And we have given special initiatives to strengthening HACAP as we continue to be an organization that embraces both diversity and inclusiveness. And in responding to emergency needs, we strengthen our communities through a rapid response to emerging factors linked to the causes of poverty. We operate a number of things and do a number of activities that respond to emerging needs in communities that deal with poverty. We operate disaster assistance. We work with local communities to respond to needs that they've identified and help them work through poverty issues. We'll share more on the specific initiatives, more on the programming, and give you some results later in our discussion. We do have a nine-county core service area. We started serving Dubuque, Delaware, and Jackson County in October of 2020. That became part of the HACAP organization. Previously, we had worked with them for about 10 months, providing some management oversight and services prior to them becoming part of HACAP. So we've been in the Dubuque area for about a couple of years almost, and we've gotten to know the community, and we're happy to be part of the area. Our annual budget is $50 million plus. We serve about 72,000 people every year. We employ about 350 folks to help us deliver all these programs, and we administer over 45 different programs to the people that we do serve. And Mitch is going to talk about some programs next, some initiatives that we've done that we've had partnerships with in, specific to the Dubuque area.
One of the things that we think separates us from most other community action agencies and nonprofits is we have the ability, I think, to respond to those community needs as they're identified to us. And we took some time studying the Dubuque landscape, and early on, we saw that we identified a few things. And one of the hallmarks of Jane's philosophy is that we don't, if there's already an existing service, we work with that group to build on their capacity, and when there's no capacity, we'll work to build it. So we worked with, I think, the Dubuque Area VNA. Is that right, Jane?
Yes.
And helped create another Marshallese Community Connector position. I know that Crescent Health has one. In fact, we've mirrored their Crescent Health Marshallese Navigator to work with the Hispanic community in the Dubuque, all in Dubuque, Delaware, and Jackson Counties to make sure that those folks have access to the health resources they'd need. So we've used Community Services Block Grant funding, which is at the core of community action. It's discretionary money our board has to help remedy the conditions that surround poverty. So we identified two groups early on, and then have also helped support others with culturally appropriate and language-appropriate navigators to get into the system to make sure that those folks are getting the help they need. We've learned that if you're not tied to that group, any of those groups, it can be hard to get buy-in and get them the services they need to make it a better community for all of us. So we find that helping others, either employing on our own or helping others employ folks who have those culturally appropriate skills, allows us to get better access into those communities. One of our big initiatives is Safe and Affordable Housing for All. We've tried several approaches in the Dubuque area. We've applied for some county funds to acquire affordable housing. But what seems to be the fastest track we're on is we're working with a local developer and some other folks to get weatherization into some of the apartments that need work in the city. The Butterfield area, the, there's a whole host of complexes that we're working with folks to get, number one, to make sure everybody who's eligible is eligible, and then to try to do multifamily weatherization where we can to help be part of that save and affordable housing mix. So we've already worked with the state. We've got permission from the state. We're working on client eligibility right now. We're building resource packets, so what we think we can do, whether it's a PTAC unit in one unit or a boiler, insulation, caulking, and that type of thing. So we're going a whole host, I don't know, Jane, how many, several hundred units in multifamily units in the Dubuque area to try to use our weatherization services to add to the mix. Another thing we've done, a really neat group, is at Four Mounds, and they have a HARC program. And one of the very first things we learned was the great work the youth training program did to help at-risk youth learn skills that are important for success. In this case, working on construction projects. They said, "We could use another," and I'm going to put a name here, I can't, we could use another Nate. And Jane said, "I'll pay for another Nate so we can double the capacity." And that has turned out to be a terrific partnership. We're also working with them on the construction side, so when they decide or they identify a unit for rehab, again, weatherization can be part of the mix, whether it's heating system replacement, or the insulation, or all that kind of stuff. So we're using all of our resources to try to partner where we can and build capacity in other areas.
We hope that by offering this weatherization track in the Four Mounds Training Program that eventually some of those at-risk youth that are part of that program will have an interest in becoming tradesmen in some of that HVAC trade business. Because, you know, there's always the need for more people joining those fields. So that was one of our reasons for wanting to do that as well, too.
We have added a weatherization crew. I'll just jump into the next slide. We've added a weatherization crew. It's sort of based out of the MacOquita area, but we're trying to really pump up the weatherization activity in all three counties. But Dubuque specifically has a lot of unique households that will take some specialized work, and we think by developing another crew, we're trying to spin up another crew in the Dubuque area to help us work on those houses because we feel like we can add a lot of value to the community, reduce carbon footprint, reduce heating bills for families, make the neighborhood more efficient. And our belief is that by shoring up the low-income housing stock, you're doing more than just lowering your energy footprint. You're making a better, safer, more affordable place for low-income folks to live. So in Dubuque, over the year, we have 30 employees that work there that make about $1 million a year. We paid about $1 million to about 120 vendors in the Dubuque area. We serve about 1,600 households. We've got five Head Start sites with 110 Head Start slots. Head Start is three to five. As Jane said, we're trying to do some early Head Start, which is zero to three. And we're also looking to expand the Head Start slots to less of a school day, school year, and more of a full-day, full-year package. We believe that folks have not only a quality Head Start program, but good wraparound childcare where they can drop their kids off in the morning, know that they're getting that quality Head Start education, a good meal, and then solid wraparound childcare. Parents can go to work in the morning, or go to school, or get their medication fixed, or whatever they need to do, and then pick them up by the end of the day. We just think that's a model for success. We've seen terrific success in our sites. In fact, Jane would tell you, and I would tell you, that our Head Start parents are among the most successful folks we serve. It's not uncommon for them to go on to become board leaders, community leaders, so we've seen a great success with that.
One thing we did do, one thing I'd like to add, Mitch. One thing we did do over the past year is we did extend the Head Start day to a seven-hour day, and it went from four days a week to five days a week. So we already have laid some of the foundation for making that a longer period so parents can work and go to school.
We have been up in the community for a number of years, seven, I think. We have a Veterans Supportive Services for Veterans Family or Veteran Homelessness program that we've been operating up there for five or six or seven years and done some other homeless work. So we've been working with other folks in the community in that area for, I don't know, five or six years at least. Energy assistance, of course, is a big thing that we're wrapping up right now. The end of the year was today, I think, actually.
Yes, you could apply through today.
And so in Dubuque, in the city proper, there's 1,560 payments. Again, that's $850,000 that's going towards the reduction in heat costs for low-income households. Here's a number that I want to see improved. Nine households weatherized. We'd like to double that, but I would add that previous year's numbers might be three. So we've really, I think, pushed weatherization in Dubuque. We've tripled the output, frankly, from years gone by, and we think we can double that again, which is part of why we want to get another crew up there because I think that there's a lot of work to be done. We're right smack dab in the middle of the end of the utility moratorium and our energy crisis program. There is just a tremendous amount of work going on everywhere to make sure. We've got special dispensation from the energy folks this year, and we're able to do things like buy down payment agreements and reduce our rears down to zero. So our strategy has always been, if you can get somebody back to zero and not have them have some repayment agreement that's got them paying twice as much as a regular bill, if you can get them back to zero, their chance of success is greatly enhanced. So our folks are working busy in all nine counties, making sure that people are staying connected. A new program, and we worked with Alexis and others at the city to realize this. The water crisis program is a big deal. We think it's got traction nationally. Did about $200,000 worth of payments, continue to do those every year it allows. We think it's a great program because it puts money in the city's pockets, which we're very interested in doing, as well as keeping folks hooked up to their water, which is really necessary. We have committed to doing a lot of local assistance projects, be it if there's a gap, if there's something that one of our outreach workers said, "Mitch, we need some money. Can you help us?" And so we put about $40,000 of that. And one of the things we did with our, some of our CSBG funds is they wanted, they came to us, Crescent Health came to us and said, "Hey, we'd like to do a vaccine clinic. Would you be part of the vaccine mix?" And Jane said, "No, we'll be the vaccine mix." And so we bought $15,000 worth of flu vaccine, I think it was. Had Crescent inoculate a fair number of folks. So that's been a pretty good partnership with Crescent all along to make sure that they have the resources that they need, and we're helping them succeed. That's really, oh, here's our number of, our fiscal year runs from October 1st to September 30th. So as of last year, here's the demography of the folks we serve. We know it's a diverse community, and we do our best to be respectful of trying to make sure that people are treated respectfully and, no matter what their language or cultural background, we have the appropriate people there, trained and ready to help them access And I will stop sharing my screen. Whitney would be mad if I didn't say we're very happy with our social media. We have a couple of people, Whitney Sanger is our communications rep, and she's all about the social world. She's a Dubuqueer. And then we have Ron Axtell, who is our Dubuque County, but works out of the Dubuque Club office. He's our outreach coordinator there. Ron's a terrific asset and been a great help for us.
He certainly has been. He's our face in Dubuque County and Dubuque. Do you have questions that we can answer?
Well, thank you very much, Jane and Mitch. This is Mayor Brad Kavanaugh here, so I'll just go around the table, see if anybody has any questions for you. Ms. Rousell.
Thank you, Jane and Mitch. It's always been a pleasure to serve on the Community Action Board, and one of the things I've been most impressed with is your goal on addressing emerging needs. And I think as you took over our counties, I just, I noticed numerous things that you identified and then were able to fund. And I wondered if maybe you could talk a little bit about your process? How do you go about, you know, making sure that you're out there so that you can find these needs and then work to address them? Thank you.
Well, we make ourselves available to the community, either through Mitch and I being there, or Ron will be our representative at some of those meetings. Whitney certainly is a representative as well, too, but we talk with community members, get involved in community groups, and we listen to the constituents that we serve and hear what they have to say and work with them to have them identify needs. Because what we want to do is be on the ground, helping to reduce poverty and look at what those needs are. Back when we were originally starting to serve Dubuque, we called together a number of group, or county and city leaders, and met with them. It's when we were planning the Community Services Block Grant funding process, I believe, wasn't it, Mitch? We called together a group of leaders, as well as people throughout the community, and said, "Help us determine what the needs are." So, you know, we get on the ground and ask what those, help us identify what the needs are, and solicit information.
Certainly, Ron is an important tool. Ron has, you know, good roots in Dubuque, even though he's from Wisconsin, I know. But Ron has good roots in Dubuque, and he's able to say, "Somebody's already doing that, or perhaps this is a group that you need to talk to." But hopefully, as our, as we spend more time there, folks will begin to look to us for a solution. So oftentimes, people will come to us and say, you know, they'll have a group of folks and say, "Hey, we've got this issue. Will you be part of the group at the table?" So the most important thing we need, we like to be at the table because we can frequently have an idea about what to do or know what resources we have. So if we can get at the table, we can usually provide some meaningful results.
Thank you. That's such important, that's such an important role for community action, and I appreciate all your efforts there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rousell.
Thank you, Laura, for being the great board member that you are as well.
Mr. Resnick, please.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation tonight. So my name is David Resnick, a longtime member of Operation New View. And of course, Laura Rousell was a former chair of Operation New View and did a lot of great work with that. But my question to you is, you know, we're very excited when you were able to step in and do such great things for our citizens. But I'm curious, you know, we had many challenges on Operation New View, and I'm curious of what you found to be your biggest challenges in this area, and how do they compare with the other areas in HACAP?
You know, probably the biggest challenge, I would say, is just not knowing the community as well, the communities that we moved into, like we did our original six counties initially. But, you know, now that we have been in the communities and in the counties, I feel like we're getting to know them quite well. So, you know, I think initially it was not knowing the areas and just getting acquainted probably was the biggest challenge. Mitch, what would you think?
I would say culturally, the difference between, the biggest difference we've seen between the two organizations is the people who work for Jane know that we want to get to yes, and no, we don't do that, or we can't, we don't have enough money, or we can't figure that out. That's never acceptable. And getting folks to realize, if there's a problem, tell us what the problem is, and we'll work on solving it and trying to understand on a more macro level. You know, we're a large organization that has a lot of resources, and usually we can find a way to get to yes. In fact, Jane loves to get to yes. She's known as the hand raiser in chief in our community because whenever she goes anywhere, she gets to yes pretty quick, and we work hard to make that work out. So I'd say that from a culture, an agency cultural standpoint, they were hesitant because of a fear that they didn't have enough resources to make a decision. And we also empower our community staff, be it Ron, or Mary Billmeyer, or folks in MacOquita, to make a decision and go ahead. And if you make a mistake, it's okay. That's really an area that we've seen a lot of growth from our Dubuque team, is that they no longer say, "Well, maybe we can buy a blood pressure cuff for this guy." We say, "Maybe we should buy this guy a year's worth of medication so we're not messing around with his blood pressure and stuff." Just bigger solutions to problems that we see a lot of and have the resources to address.
Thank you very much. And briefly, could you tell us, I know you're very good and very into, so to speak, partnering with area, you don't want to duplicate services, you mentioned that. I'm hoping that you have some plans for working with Anderson-Sancy and the Office of Shared Prosperity. And then could you maybe talk about your partnerships with local groups, please?
Yeah, well, we work with Crescent. We work with the Disaster Group. We work with the Community Foundation. We work with the school system. We work with the city staff members. We work with the Area Education Association. We work with the Feeding America Food Bank.
Council on Governments.
Yeah, we work with the county, the city. I mean, I think we have pretty good partners established, partnerships established. We work with workforce development, Catholic charity, with the housing group, the Council of Governments, yes, so.
I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but we're doing things like meeting with the folks at Stipple Square, wondering how we can integrate Head Start into their service package.
Especially early Head Start into their service.
With some local developers that are trying to get the Butterfield Complex and other places up to a higher-quality environment. So it's private, nonprofit, government. We try to work with anybody who's willing to partner with us.
Thank you very much for your answers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there questions or discussions? Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
Hi, Jane and Mitch, this is Katie Wethel. I just was curious, what do you think your biggest challenge was during the pandemic in order to serve?
Well, when we started, we, all the folks providing services kind of went into a, "Well, this can't be done." And we invested a lot of money in technology, and we continued to provide services throughout the entire process, but moving from face-to-face to online or phone contact, equipping all of our staff with the technology necessary so they can work from home, or they can work remotely. I know Jane is proud we didn't lay a single person off. We kept everybody employed, and some of our service numbers actually went up. For example, our WIC numbers, we set record-high WIC enrollment here in Lynn County. So some of our services actually took off, and we've chosen to adapt our model, and some folks are continuing to work remotely and only come in here once or twice a week. So initially, it was the technology and the shock of, well, we can't, we have to meet these people face-to-face in figuring out how do we still provide service in a new model. And then we have a very small technology team, one longtime person, and then we have a entry-level tech that comes and goes. But so with our one longtime person, we really sweded, I don't know how many laptops and hotspots and cell phones, and we just added a huge technological capacity. We're yielding fruit yet today and really have seen that be a nice addition, another way to handle folks so that no matter- be a nice addition, another way to handle folks, so that no matter how you come at us, now our website has got a chat feature on it. So if you want to inquire, if that's the way you want to talk to us, we have a text feature, so clients or community members want to text us. So it really opened up our eyes to, there's more than one way, people don't need to necessarily walk in and apply for services. In fact, it's a burden for many people. And so we've extended our hours, we've extended our ability to serve folks, and really, if there's an upside to this whole thing, that's it, I.
Yeah, and I was going to say, initially, it was the learning curve on how to serve, continue to serve people. And, you know, we, Mitch and I would say, "Well, yeah, we're going to continue to serve people." But after we had been through it, you know, we learned so much, and we have so many different ways that we're now serving clients, that we're accessible to them, and we're able to meet them where they're at. So it was such a learning opportunity for all of us, for clients as well. Because we have clients coming to us now that had never reached out for our services before, because they didn't have a way to access them. Now they do.
And just thinking differently about everything, why can't you take a picture on your cellphone and send it to me of your bill, or whatever, rather than, "Oh, you got to come into the office, and we got to make photocopies, and then we'll give you your originals?" We just, it has really expanded our idea of, there isn't, we have a no wrong door, there really is no wrong door. However you want to get to us, if you want to come in and have an appointment, that's fine. But there are so many avenues now that we have opened up, that it's, it's been an upside to generally bad, a whole bad experience.
And, you know, we've changed our business model, too, because we don't have all the copy machines sitting around like what we used to have, because we don't copy the number of documents that we had. We use, like, the take-a-picture-of-things, or people send them in electronically. We have electronic records. So, you know, it's, like I said, it's been a learning curve for us as well.
Isn't it interesting that our biggest hurdles are some of our greatest victories in the pandemic?
Exactly.
What you just described is very impressive. So thank you for pivoting, and thank you for all your work.
Absolutely.
Well, this is Brad Kavanaugh. I do have a question for you. Thank you very much for your presentation. This is, it's very helpful to hear kind of what it's been like for you the last couple of years, now that you've come into the Dubuque community. And we're very thankful that you're here. We're glad that you were able to step in and be able to fulfill some very important needs in the community. So the question that I have has to do with outcomes. I'm, you know, one of the things that we've talked about frequently at this table, I know, in the last couple of years, is the idea of moving the needle on some of these issues. So, you know, I heard you mention poverty as an example, and you talked pretty extensively about affordable housing, which is a discussion that we are right now kind of taking a harder look at, and really stepping into even more. But what I'd love to know more about is kind of how you, as an organization, have moved the needle. And, you know, maybe that data doesn't quite exist in Dubuque yet, but I'd love to know how that has worked for you in some of the other counties that you've served. And I'm wondering if there's any documents that you'd be able to send to the council that would tell us a little bit more about what those outcomes are, you know, how you have made a measurable impact on things like housing, and, you know, providing more affordable housing, or how that measurable impact has been made in providing food for people. Is there anything that you'd be able to share with us on that?
For sure. So we have, we follow a decision-making process called ROMA, Results-Oriented Management and Accountability. And we actually have a person on staff whose job it is to measure. What I gave you before were outputs, just through numbers, dollars spent, people served. We have a fairly complicated matrix that tracks outcomes. What difference did we make? Our stat guy, David, would say, "Dad, I got," we had five runs today, and the response would be, "But did you win?", which is what outcomes are. And so we have quite a number of sophisticated outcomes-tracking techniques that we would love to share with you. We are, the entire community action world is all about measuring outcomes, not, for so long, we've just had outputs, output, outputs. And again, people say, "So what? What is all this due for?" And so what we can do is hopefully show a quantitative difference on people's lives, older people being able to stay in their apartments longer. So we have a whole host of metrics that we would be happy to share.
Yeah, from early childhood to elderly staying in their home, to families having more food, reducing food insecurity, yes, we can share that with you, certainly. Now, it's going to be, we're going to have as much history in Dubuque as what we do in some of the other counties, but certainly, we can share what we have.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that very much. And I'm very happy to hear you cite the difference between outputs and outcomes, because that's a discussion we've also had here at this table, making sure that, you know, the work that we're doing isn't just about the number of people that we're serving, but what we're actually doing for those people.
The difference we're making, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you. I really appreciate you sending that information our way.
Okay.
Well, any other questions or discussion? Well, with that, then, thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate this, and we're looking forward to seeing you around the community and having more of these discussions.
Great. It was great to meet with you, and we appreciate your support. So we'll send that information to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night. There being no further business in the work session, we will stand adjourned.
Muted.